Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for August the 28th, 2023. If you would please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Rachel Holtein.
Present.
Leah Dozeman has reported ill this evening.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Cory Stites.
Present.
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Val Nosler Beck also reported ill this evening. Judy Hutchinson.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have six council members present. That's a quorum.
Thank you. Counselors, in your pack tonight, we have, we have meeting minutes for August the 14th of 2023 and study, special study session notes for August the 24th of 2023. Are there any corrections to be noted on the minutes or the study session notes? Seeing none, we will let those stand as prepared by our clerk with our thanks. Are there any changes to be noted in the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we will proceed as noted on the agenda. And we've got a couple of proclamations and I will go to the podium. We have a proclamation tonight for National Suicide Prevention Month in September. I'd like to ask Rachel Vilner, the Community Engagement Coordinator with the Jefferson Center for Mental Health, to join me at the podium. You would please, Rachel? Come on up. Thank you for being here tonight. Whereas National Suicide Prevention Month, in conjunction with National Suicide Prevention Week, is an annual, month-long campaign in the United States to inform and engage health professionals and the general public about suicide prevention and warning signs of suicide. And whereas, by drawing attention to the problem of suicide in the United States, the campaign also strives to reduce the stigma surrounding the topic, as well as encourage the pursuit of mental health assistance and support people who have attempted suicide. And whereas, as part of the campaign, health organizations are encouraged to conduct depression screenings, including self-administered and online tests, and refer interested individuals to a national toll-free crisis hotline telephone number. That number is 1-800-273-TALK or 8255. And whereas, since 1975, National Suicide Prevention Week awareness events are held throughout the week corresponding to World Suicide Prevention Day, which is recognized annually on the 10th day of September. And whereas, I encourage all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors, and to generally convey their appreciation for the existence by any gesture they seem appropriate. A simple phone call, a message, a handshake, or a hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize the value of their life and that suicide is not the answer. Now therefore be it resolved that I Bud Starker and the City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, do hereby proclaim that September is declared Suicide Prevention Month and the week of September 10 through 16, 2023 be declared Suicide Prevention Week in the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado. Signed today, August 28th, 2023.
Thank you for that interjection. Hello, everyone. My name is Rachel Vilner, and I'm the Suicide Prevention Coordinator at Jefferson Center for Mental Health. I also coordinate the Suicide Prevention Coalition of Jefferson, Clear Creek, and Gilpin Counties. On behalf of the board, staff, and clients at Jefferson Center, and on behalf of the Suicide Prevention Coalition, thank you for issuing this proclamation and recognizing September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Wheat Ridge. Suicide is a serious public health issue that has lasting harmful effects on our communities. Suicide and suicide attempts affect the health and well-being of friends, loved ones, coworkers, and the community. When people die by suicide, their surviving family and friends may experience prolonged grief, shock, anger, guilt, and even experience symptoms of depression and anxiety. Deaths by suicide have been rising for the last decade. In 2022, 1,287 people died by suicide in our state alone, and 123 of those people were here in Jefferson County. There are many factors that contribute to suicide. For example, those who have experienced violence, abuse, bullying are at a much higher risk for suicide. There are also higher rates of suicide among veterans, folks that live in rural areas, and folks that identify as part of the LGBTQ+ community. Being connected to a family, to a community, and having access to quality mental health care can decrease suicidal thoughts and behaviors. For children, it is having at least one trusted adult, and just that can make the difference in their life. Jefferson Center is a nonprofit community mental health center. Every day, we provide mental health care and substance use treatment, wellness services, and a host of additional resources to support the needs of so many people in our community. Each year, Jefferson Center touches the lives of nearly 30,000 people. We are committed to breaking down the barriers that prevent people from seeking care when they need it, which means services not only in our office locations, but in more than 150 community settings, such as schools, medical practices, and partnering with law enforcement. As part of my role at Jefferson Center, I facilitate a coalition of over 30 passionate community members, including public health professionals, educators, and folks with lived experience. We work as a team to utilize evidence-based upstream prevention strategies with the support of the Office of Suicide Prevention in the Department of Public Health and Environment. Our goal is to reduce suicide rates across the state by 20% by 2025. We know we cannot do this alone. That is why your support is so critical. We can do our part to save lives by recognizing the signs and symptoms and utilizing the resources available to us. Together, we will increase awareness and reduce the stigma associated with mental health and work to end suicide in our community. Thank you again for recognizing Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and for supporting Jefferson Center. We couldn't do this important work without you.
Thank you very much. Just a minute. We've got a photo, we've got a photo op coming here. Okay, Rachel, thank you very much, and thank you for joining us tonight. And thank, thank you for the work that Jefferson Center does. We want to recognize our navigator program, which, over the last two years, has been very successful. I'd like to invite our navigator, Rebecca Rudaber, to the, to the podium along with Corey Kolar, who's our housing navigator, and Dan Maples, who's the city, city manager for the city of Edgewater. Come on up here because we've got a little, a little recognition stuff going on, so we want to thank you guys. Excellent. We, you know, we like a lot of things, but a surprise is, is good too. So, so anyway, we wanted, tonight we'd like to celebrate the 100 people who have been housed throughout the city of Wheat Ridge Homeless Navigation Program. This program started in December 2020 with one homeless, homelessness navigator, Rebecca Rudaber, shared between Wheat Ridge, Golden, and Edgewater, and now the role supports just Wheat Ridge and Edgewater, and we've added Corey Kolar, our housing navigator, in July last year. To get someone housed, it can be really time-intensive depending on the needs of the individual. It first asks if someone feels comfortable enough with our neighbors to share the specific, the specifics of their particular situation and their personal information. It can take a while to develop the rapport necessary to create this relationship. Next, depending upon support needed, the navigators could do things like contact clients with social security benefits, acquire birth certificates and social security cards, make DMV appointments, provide motel vouchers, and so apply for housing vouchers, help with the housing search and security deposits, provide move-in kits to help folks feel at home once they're finally in their new space. It can take months or even years to get someone into permanent or transitional housing. All of this is to say that getting 100 individuals housed is a huge lift and an incredible accomplishment. We are so proud of our work being done by our Homeless Navigator Program. Finally, this is our Homeless Navigator Rebecca Rudaber's last week with the city after almost three years in this role. We would like to thank her for getting this program up and running and for leaving the program in such a great spot. Navigation work is tough, and we really appreciate her time and dedication to the program. I want to turn this over to Rebecca to say a few words about this exciting accomplishment of getting 100 people housed in our city. Rebecca.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor mentioned, my name's Rebecca Rudaber, and I've been the homeless navigator, and I've been in this position for the past three years serving Edgewater and Wheat Ridge. As the mayor mentioned, housing just one person is a huge lift, much less 100 people. That's what we're very excited about this accomplishment. I wanted to share a story to provide more context of how difficult it can get, be to house, get someone to the end goal of housing. Earlier this year, one of my clients was matched with a permanent supportive housing voucher through the Coordinated Entry System. A permanent supportive housing voucher is a lifetime voucher that comes with case management support where clients only pay 30% of their income. And it was matched through this coordinated entry system, which is a client-centered process that partners with service providers and community members to assess and identify the housing needs of people experiencing homelessness. And through this coordinated entry system, individuals, youth, families, and families are matched to the appropriate level of housing and resource elevating, housing resource while elevating client choice. And here in Denver, our coordinated entry system is managed by Metro Denver Homeless Initiative, MDHI. So when a client is matched, a client then needs to provide a long list of documents, such as their vital docs, including ID, social, and birth certificate, a verification of homelessness, and a verification of disability. For this specific individual that was matched, they had been in Colorado for about five to six years but had never obtained a Colorado ID, meaning they have to go through the exceptions process. Through the exceptions process, one must provide a social security card, a birth certificate, and three additional forms of ID. This could include school records, marriage or divorce records, jail IDs, military records, things of that nature. Even once getting those documents, it's always, always, the person almost always has to work with Colorado Legal Services to present their documentation to the DMV due to how difficult this process is. For my client, they had no documents at all. We started by ordering their birth certificate from North Carolina. After submitting the order in February, we were provided a shipping date of July. I called the DMV multiple times to try to explain the situation and get the order expedited, but I had no success. And so since this client didn't have a birth certificate, they couldn't get a copy of their social security card. I had to get a release and order a certified copy of their medical records with a wet stamp. I also had to order their high school records from North Carolina and wait for those to come in and contact the jail to inquire about getting a copy of their jail ID. After obtaining these documents, then we can look, we could then work with Colorado Legal Services to apply for an ID. Individuals not having an ID in Colorado, not having a Colorado ID is very common within our community and can be a very long process to resolve. Until someone has an ID, they cannot even apply for their housing voucher, which prolongs getting them into housing. This person did ultimately get all of the documents they needed for their voucher, but it took a total of four months just for the documentation piece, and then we have the housing search piece. While this is not the case for everyone, going through the lengthy process of obtaining an ID is just one of the barriers that many of our unhoused neighbors face while trying to secure housing. I would like to really thank the City Council of Wheat Ridge and Edgewater, and the cities of Wheat Ridge and Edgewater for their support of this program and the work that Corey and I do every day. Without their support of this program, we would not have been able to help, help this client obtain their ID or get to this accomplishment of housing 100 people. And while I'm sad to be leaving Wheat Ridge and Edgewater, my new position will be in Lakewood, so I won't be too far away, and I'll still be helping with the Jeffco response on homelessness. Thank you.
Not on the agenda tonight, but as a sort of a special surprise, I want to ask Joe Demont and his team to come up here. That, these are the folks that helped put together our Carnation Festival and the festival parade, and they've done a great job this year. And so you guys come on up and we want to hear Joe how he did this year. How you doing, Joe?
Good.
The mic's yours.
All righty. Well, thank you all. Thank you, Mayor Starker. I just here to, on behalf of Leah Dozeman, she sends her regrets she couldn't make it to everyone, for the support you continually give to us at the Carnation Festival. This is our 54th Annual Carnation Festival, and I'm here to, with some of our board members, Renee Schreiner, Chris Miller, you might know, Walt Pettit, everybody knows, and on behalf of 18 of us on the board, I guess you guys, a couple of you could come down here too, but we'll do that next year. I want to present the plate, our plate design contest again this year was a blast. We had about 10 entries, and our winner this year was Lorian Levy Home with, I don't know who's going to be able to see that best, but it's a depiction of, it's got a little bit of fireworks, a little bit of carnations, and it's really a beautiful plate this year. It'll go on the wall with the rest of them, and looks like somebody's going to have to make some more brackets in a couple of years here, but we're going to leave this with the mayor this year.
Okay.
And we just want to thank everybody, everybody who had anything to do with it. We had an incredible year. We had record turnout. We just want to say that the, the funding that we get from you is, is parlayed over and over and over. We don't just take the money and throw a party. We take the money, we plan events that make money for up to almost 17 different groups, clubs, committees, school functions, and most of that money, we, we bring in nearly triple what you give us, and then we pay that out through everything. So we get to see all these clubs make money, fund their scholarships, fund their programs, and we get to have a really, really awesome party too. So we appreciate everything you do. Can't say enough about what the police and the parks and the public works and every department does. The support you give us is unbelievable. You know, we are, every meeting starts with thanks to the departments and thanks for everything you do, because we couldn't do it without you. It's, it's such a pleasure to work with them and, you know, from what we hear, we're not causing too much trouble. But if we are, we do hear about it, I'm not going to lie. So I just want to say thank you, present the plate, thank everybody here, thank everybody who showed up, and thank everybody who helped. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We're going to get, you know, we're going to, yeah, let's, here, let me get over here and move. Guys, come over here. All right, come on over. Let's get it. Okay. Okay, thanks so much. Great to see you. We all appreciate it. I'm going to give this right over here to the. Okay, we are now at our public's right to speak. We invite members of the public to speak on any agenda item that, or any item that is not on the agenda for three minutes under our public's right to speak. We have a special study session with one item on it, the West 38th Avenue Improvements Update, and if, and you may speak on that. We will take public testimony or public comment on that item during, at this time also. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you're here in the hall and haven't signed up to speak, you may still do so now. If you're joining us online, you may raise your hand in the virtual format, and we will bring you into the meeting. Happy to hear from you in either, either here in person or online. I'll give it just a minute. And it doesn't look like we have anybody coming forward either in person or online, so we will move past this and go to our consent agenda item number one. Counselor Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is item 1A through 1E. Resolution number 40-2023, a resolution supporting three applications to the Jefferson County Open Space Trails Partnership Program. At issue, the Parks and Rec Department wishes to submit three applications to the Jefferson County Open Space Trails Partnership Program to request funding for three trail projects across the city. The City Council resolution of support is required for the applications. Consent agenda item 1B, a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Julia Stern to the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority doing business as Renewal Wheat Ridge. At issue on July 5th, 2023, Kristi Davis from District 2 resigned from the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority doing business as Renewal Wheat Ridge effective immediately. The vacancy was posted for a term of four weeks on the city of Wheat Ridge website and promoted through various channels from July 17th to August 11th. Appointments to the authority are made by the mayor, subject to approval by a majority vote of the entire city council. There is one applicant from District 2 who newly applied, and two applicants from other districts who applied in January during the regularly scheduled reappointment process. If, after reasonable advertisement, no applications are received from residents within the relevant city council district vacancy on the authority, any otherwise qualified resident of the city may be appointed. Consent agenda item 1C, resolution number 41-2023, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 capital improvement program budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $85,126 for the purposes of accepting a $70,000 Main Street grant to make pedestrian improvements at the 38th Avenue and Reed Street intersection. At issue, the city was rewarded a revitalizing Main Street grant from the Colorado Department of Transportation, CDOT, in the amount of $70,000 to reconstruct the sidewalk on the south side of 38th Avenue at Reed Street and install an enhanced crosswalk across 38th Avenue on the east side of Reed Street. The full cost of this project, $85,126, exceeds the grant amount. A supplemental budget appropriation is required to accept and appropriate the grant and supplemental in the 2023 budget. Consent agenda item 1D, resolution number 42-2023, a resolution amending the 2023 fiscal year general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $37,586.79 for the purpose of accepting grant funds from the Colorado Department of Early Childhood. At issue, in 2022, the city was awarded federal funding through the State of Colorado Department of Early Childhood Care, Stabilization, and Workforce Sustainability Grant Program for the SUN Camp and Licensed Preschool Childcare Program through June 30th, 2023. The Department of Early Childhood has offered additional grant funding in the amount of $37,586.79 for these programs through September 30th, 2023. A resolution approving a supplemental budget appropriation is required to accept and appropriate this additional grant funding. Consent agenda item 1E, resolution number 43-2023, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 renewal Wheat Ridge Bond Fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $132,868 for the purpose of amending the 32nd Avenue Bike Lane contract with David Evans and Associates, Inc. At issue, a contract was previously awarded to David Evans and Associates, Inc., DEA, for the 32nd Avenue Bike Lane Project. After the contract award, the city received a transportation improvement, TIP, grant providing additional construction funding for the ability to provide better bike, pedestrian, bike ped facilities for the westbound direction. The TIP grant federalizes the process, increases the environmental clearance process. An amendment to the 32nd Avenue Bike Lanes contract with DEA in the amount of $132,868 is being presented for consideration to include the additional design and environmental work associated with the TIP grant. Consent agenda item 1F, motion to amend the contract with Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC for the Recreation Center Parking Lot Repair Project to allow for an additional contingency amount of $55,000 for, for a total not to exceed amount of $589,472. At issue, a contract for the repair of the Recreation Center parking lot was approved by city council in June 2023 in the amount of $485,972, plus a staff-managed contingency of $48,500 for a total not to exceed contract amount of $534,472. Staff is requesting the contingency amount increased by an additional $55,000 to account for additional work on the project that has been identified since contract award. Specifically, the project would install additional ADA accessible parking stalls, enhanced striping for electrical vehicle parking, and drainage improvements along the rear access road to the facility. This would increase the total not to exceed amount of the contract to $589,472.
Thank you very much. This is our consent agenda. May I have a motion to accept items 1A through 1F?
A move to approve consent agenda items 1A through 1F.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Stites. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes seven to nothing since Counselor, Counselor Nosler Beck joined us shortly after roll call.
Okay, thank you very much, and welcome, Counselor Nosler Beck. We will now go to agenda item number two. Wait a minute, number two. Counselor Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill number 20-2023, an ordinance amending sections 11-561, 11-566, and 26-114 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the hotel licensing program.
Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation on this item?
We do. We have a brief presentation.
Okay. Okay, this is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not, it is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item? We do. Alyshak, Deputy City Manager, will introduce it.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Yes, I'll just provide a very brief recap of the study session conversation that we had back on June 12th, which you might recall was the night the Nuggets won the NBA championship. We talked about the hotel properties in Wheat Ridge. We provided a licensing update on where we were with the licensing program. We provided an update about the public safety improvements that we've seen in the I-70 and Kipling about the public safety improvements that we've seen in the I-70 and Kipling Corridor. We discussed the progress in that we've made collaboratively with Family Tree in helping long-term hotel residents find permanent housing. And we request a direction on some potential code amendments to clarify the existing code. So, this is all covered in the memo, but on June 12th, council provided consensus to make the following amendments to this code. The first is to clarify that a property allowing extended stays without an approved extended stay addendum is a hotel licensing violation. The second is to clarify the length of stay definition, so that guests must vacate the property for sixty days. They must, they must vacate for sixty days after a twenty-nine day stay anywhere on the property. Clarifies that. It clarifies the types of calls that are included and excluded from the calls for service calculation, and finally reduces the validity of the special use permit from one year to six months, which reduces the grace period offered to hotels during property renovations to comply with extended stay regulations from twenty-four months to more like twelve to eighteen months. So, since our discussion with you back on June 12th, and you provided consensus for those amendments, but since our discussion with you on June, in June, and also since the first reading of this ordinance, the staff working group has identified two additional very minor amendments included in red font in your, the current draft of the ordinance in your packet, and for that, the chief will just offer an explanation.
Thank you, Ally. Very briefly, under Section 11, five sixty-four point two and eleven five sixty-four point six, working with the hotels, and we're happy to see the hotels are working with us much, much more collaboratively lately, but there was some lack of clarity, and we just needed to add a few words. One of them, most prominently, is annually. Where it comes to hotel, hotels participating in the Crime Free Hotel Motel Program, that will be annually. They were confused as to whether they completed it once, and that was good for the lifetime. And then, the security plan must be reviewed annually. They don't have to redo it, but certainly things will change, and we ask them to update it. So, those are the only two points of clarity we needed to add to this. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, our city attorney is on Zoom this evening. He's under the weather, but if he helped with this, this ordinance. So, if you have any questions, Mr. Dolly is online.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's it from us, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. We would like to invite the public to speak on this as part of the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this, but if you're here in, in City Hall and haven't signed up, you may, you may come to the podium, and we'll recognize you to speak on this item. If you're joining us online, please raise your hand, and we're happy to bring you into the meeting.
No one, Mr. Mayor.
Wait just a moment, in case anybody decides to come forward, either online or in the meeting, and it doesn't look like anybody is, so I will go to questions of council for staff. Are there any questions on this item that you wish to bring before staff before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Counselor Hoppy, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number Twenty Dash Two Zero Two Three, an ordinance amending Sections 11 dash five six one, 11 dash five six six, and 26 dash one one four of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the hotel licensing program on second reading, and that takes effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Weaver. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go now to our third agenda item. Counselor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Council Bill Number Twenty-One Dash Twenty Twenty Three, an ordinance giving notice of and calling for submitting a ballot question at the city's regular November 7th, 2023 election concerning the issuance of, of debt and an extension of the expiring sales and use tax of one-half of one cent to pay such debt and other matters related thereto. At issue, or is there a presentation?
Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do.
We, we do, so we won't read the issue statement. Okay. This will, this is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, a staff presentation.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I start, I would like to introduce Maria Harwood with Butler Snow. That's the city's bond counsel. She's in the audience. Maria helped us out with the 2017 bond issuance, and their firm also helped us out with the 2021 Urban Renewal Authority bonds. And then also Nate Eklaff and Jay Yang with Piper Sandler in the back here, who you've met before. They're the city's bond underwriter, and they also helped with the 2021 URA bond. So, if you have any questions for them, they're here to answer, to help answer questions. But in 2016, Wheat Ridge voters approved a temporary one-half of one cent sales and use tax rate increase and authorized the city to issue debt in the amount of thirty-three million for new access ramps off I-70 for the Clear Creek Crossing Development. This project has been completed. For improvements to the Anderson Building and Anderson Park, these improvements have been completed. For multimodal improvements at the Wheat Ridge Ward Commuter Rail Station, these are currently underway. And for the Improve Wadsworth Project, that project is also currently underway. This temporary tax will expire in 2029 or when thirty-eight and a half million in revenue is, is raised. We project the temporary sales and use tax will generate thirty-eight and a half million by the end of next year or the beginning of 2025, after only about eight years. City Council gave direction to staff at their annual retreat in this, this last January to survey the community to determine the level of support for an extension of this tax for certain public improvement projects. Results from three separate surveys were presented to city council and the public on April 3rd, June 12th, and July 17th. In all three surveys, respondents overwhelmingly supported an extension of the tax for primary street corridor improvements, filling sidewalk gaps and other sidewalk repair and drainage and floodplain improvements. Council gave direction to staff on July 17th to draft a ballot question to extend the one-half of one cent sales tax and use tax for twenty years specifically for, and this is the language that's actually in the ballot question, sidewalk, bike lane, and street improvements on primary street corridors such as 32nd Avenue, 38th Avenue, 44th Avenue, and Youngfield Street, filling sidewalk gaps and other sidewalk repair and replacement with an emphasis on major pedestrian corridors and routes to schools, and drainage and floodplain infrastructure improvements at priority locations in the city. Our bond underwriter has estimated this tax will generate enough revenue over a twenty-year period to net out approximately seventy-five million dollars in available project funds upon sale of the bonds. So, with that, if you have any questions, as I mentioned, our guests are here and, and staff. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we go to questions of council, I would like to invite the public to speak on this item. I don't have anyone signed up to speak at this time, but if you're here in the hall, you may come to the podium and speak now. If you're joining us online, please raise your hand. We're happy to have you join us in the meeting that way. So, I'll give it just a moment and check with our clerk to see if anyone's raising their hand online. I don't see anybody coming forward, so I will close our Public's Right to Speak on this item and go to questions from council. Any questions from our counselors on this item? Pretty well studied. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Counselor Weaver, may I have a motion on this?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number Twenty-One Dash Twenty Twenty Three, an ordinance giving notice of and calling for submitting a ballot question at the city's regular November 7th, 2023 election concerning the issuance of debt and an extension of the expiring sales and use tax of one-half of one cent to pay for such debt and other matters related thereto on second reading, and then it takes effect immediately upon adoption.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk, Counselor Hulteen has raised her quest, raised her hand.
All right, I'm just so excited that we're referring this out. I, my journey to this point in time really started with wanting Wheat Ridge to figure out how to reinvest in safe corridors for people who are walking, biking, crossing their street. And when our streets are safe for people who aren't traveling in cars, it's actually also safer for people who are traveling in cars, and I think it's going to contribute to the economic vibrancy of our city and, and as well as our drainage. So, I'm just really excited that in my tenure at the city of involvement, that we have done so much good planning and we're really seeing such strong support for moving forward with this. So, I wish good luck on the ballot, and I just want to thank my colleagues for such good dialogue to help craft something that when we took it to the community, it was clearly in line with the investments they'd like to see. So, I'm looking forward to voting yes on this.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? Thank you very much. We will move now to Agenda Item Number Four. Counselor Hulteen, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number Twenty-Two Twenty Twenty Three, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 7575 West 44th Avenue from commercial one, C1, to mixed-use commercial, MUC, case number WZ 2306. At issue, the city owns the former Bank of the West property at 7575 West 44th Avenue and is proposing a zone change from commercial one, C1, to mixed-use commercial, MUC. The zone change will result in a zoning that matches surrounding zoning and enables redevelopment of the site by expanding permitted uses.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. It will be quasi judicial. Counselor Hulteen, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number Twenty-Two Twenty Twenty Three, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 7575 West 44th Avenue from commercial one, C1, to mixed-use commercial, MUC. On first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, September 25th, 2023, at 6:30 PM as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and then it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Ohm. Will the clerk please poll the council?
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Five. Counselor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number Twenty-Three Dash Twenty Twenty Three, an ordinance amending Chapter Two and Chapter Twenty-Six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the city's subdivision and development review requirements and making conforming amendments therewith. At issue, the proposed ordinance updates Chapter Two and Chapter Twenty-Six of the Code of Laws to revise the city's subdivision and development review requirements. The ordinance accomplishes three main goals. Number one, to prioritize meaningful public engagement and education intended to inform the public of impactful subdivision applications. Two, to reduce reliance on public hearings when the proposed uses and designs were permitted by the underlying zoning. Three, to reduce duplication and unnecessary cross-references within the code to ensure it is easy to understand and administer.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. It will not be quasi judicial. Counselor Ohm, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number Twenty-Three Dash Twenty Twenty Three, an ordinance amending Chapter Two and Chapter Twenty-Six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the city's subdivision and development review requirements and making conforming amendments therewith. On first reading, order published, the public hearing set for Monday, September 11th, 2023, at 6:30 PM as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and then it takes effect fifteen days after final publication.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion by, and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. May I have the clerk to please call the roll? Thank you very much. We will go to Agenda Item Number Six. Counselor Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number Forty-four Dash Twenty Twenty Three, a resolution approving amendment number three to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation for the Improve Wadsworth Project. At issue, in 2022, the city worked with its respective senators and House representative to obtain additional four million dollars in federal funding for the Improve Wadsworth Project. This funding approved in December 2022 is via congressionally-directed spending, CDS, through the Highway Improvement Program within the fiscal year 2023 Omnibus Funding Bill. An amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, with the Colorado Department of Transportation, CDOT, is necessary to add these funds to the project budget.
Thank you very much. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. In addition to being grateful for the extra funding we received from Congress, we thought this would be a great opportunity to do a brief update on the Wadsworth Project. Maria DeAndrea, our Public Works Director.
Okay, Director DeAndrea.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As City Manager Goff mentioned, we just want to give you a, a brief update. We think this is a great time to come back, let you know about progress and where we go from here. So, I think this is a major milestone is getting the final funding in, in line for the remainder of that originally scoped project that the city council envisioned. So, just briefly, we are, this additional work that the four million dollars that you're approving tonight through that IGA with CDOT allows us to add in total about sixteen million dollars more to the total construction cost, which brings us just over fifty million dollars total. And this does, this will extend the completion time for the project. Right now, we're anticipating spring of 2026. We're hoping that that can be sooner, maybe fall of 2025, where at least all of the lanes will be open to, fully open to traffic, and then some landscaping work maybe in the spring. So, we are looking at another couple of years of construction, and we're going to start tracking this a little bit so you can see how close we are to completion. So, you see there on that graphic, we're just under that fifty percent mark, hoping to reach that probably within, before the end of the year, so we can say that we've made about halfway the progress. And that is for the entire work that we've talked about tonight, as well as that original work that started back in fall of 2021. As you can see here on this graphic, the blue is what was originally bid and awarded back in the fall of 2021, and that extends all the way from I-70 down to about 41st Avenue, and that's the work that we've been doing currently over the last year and a half or so. And the orange represents the additional work that's being added through the amendment, through the congressionally-directed spending, as well as additional funding from the city. So, now you see we go from the original concept, which extended all the way south to 35th Avenue. And just to highlight again the benefits of doing both pieces at once, of course, the community wanted to go that entire distance. We didn't have enough funding, so we had to scale back to 41st Avenue. But moving forward at this time really does allow us to do those two efforts concurrently, which ultimately eliminates the need for us to construct some throwaway items. So, we did have to connect some, or put some pavement in, put some other work that eventually, if we were going to do this at a later time, would have had been taken out and, in order to get that ultimate project done. So, we can, we're not having to do that work. We're also consolidating the construction impacts, meaning that we're going to put this, while it might be worse for a longer period of time, we do think that there's timing benefits by doing both of these phases together. And that although it'll be difficult, we know that we can get to the end. We've got a, an end goal in sight, and we can get there. And really, having that one contractor, they have to coordinate already with so many private utilities, with the water and sand districts, other entities within the corridor. Having one contractor to do both elements of the project is really, hopefully, going to streamline that coordination. And ultimately, it saves us construction management and testing costs. Just a little bit, we wanted to talk about, we have been monitoring traffic counts in the area, both in terms of total volumes, as well as the type of traffic, so truck splits versus passenger cars, that sort of thing, as well as speeds. And that's at a variety of locations adjacent to the corridor, both east and west of Wadsworth, and even south of 38th Avenue. There were a lot of concerns early on before the project even got into construction that all that spillover traffic was going to go back to the neighboring streets. And in some areas, we have seen that those traffic counts have increased. While the volumes are relatively low and they can still handle it on those streets, I think people will certainly see that there's, and will testify that there has been increases. Generally, though, the speeds have stayed the same, within probably one to one and a half miles difference. So, we've been doing counts roughly every year. We'll continue to do so, and what we And what we want to do is, where those, where we are seeing those significant differences, either now or in the future, we're going to go back to the drawing board and look at, what are some options that we can put in place to eliminate or reduce that cut-through So the next steps, again, just minimizing those impacts. I know our businesses are certainly feeling it to some extent, as the traffic shifts, as people get clogged in that ongoing daily construction traffic. So we want to minimize those impacts where we can, work, continue to work with our businesses, as well as our nearby residents and adjacent property owners, to try and minimize those impacts during construction. And what that leads down to is really having good communication, so keeping our website up to date, doing periodic outreach to our neighbors, as well as using our various social media platforms effectively to get the message out if there's traffic shifts or delays that could be encountered, to try and find alternate routes through the area. And collaboration, so we continue to work with all the private utilities. It's been an ongoing struggle, but we feel like we have good connections with each of them. Water, the Wheat Ridge Water and Sanitation Districts have been amazing to work with. They are replacing significant amounts of their infrastructure with this project, and so they've been great partners. But every day, you can imagine, there's conflicts, there's issues to resolve, and all of those folks step up to try and come to a solution so that we can keep the contractor moving. And then we would like to offer, our contractor, Concrete Works of Colorado, is offered to take counsel on a walking tour, if you're interested. So if there is, we can certainly arrange a date, probably sometime within the next month or so. It'll be a little bit cooler out, but still able to get out, see the project really from a boots-on-the-ground perspective. And with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Director DeAndrea. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to invite the public to speak on this. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you're here, please come to the podium, and we'll be glad to take your comments. If you're joining us online, once again, please raise your hand in the virtual format, and we're happy to bring you into the meeting. And I'll give it just a moment to see if anybody responds to any of those invitations. It looks like we don't see anyone, so we'll, we'll move past our, our public input and go to questions from council. Are there any questions from council? Councilor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm curious, you know, with the, with the extended timeline, I'm really enjoying seeing the side path on the east side of Wadsworth, looking pretty close to completion, and is that going to be open and available to people once the, as the, once it's done and isn't being impacted by the construction?
Yes, we're evaluating that. So what, what that entails is basically taking early, early ownership of that. So ultimately, until the project is done, normally, the contractor would be responsible for everything associated with that, so snow removal, anything like that, ongoing damage. So we want to evaluate that in regards to the benefits that it presents by opening that up, making sure that it is safe. Right now, you can see some of the landscaping areas, it's a pretty steep drop-off, so we want to get those filled, and then we'll evaluate that basically to make sure that we have the resources in place to take care of that in lieu of the contractor.
Great. And then my other question, so as somebody who actually has to get through the project to get out of my neighborhood, you know, especially in the last month, it's been like a different project almost every day, and in, a couple of things are coming out of that. One is just a little bit of feedback in that, like, the, the signal timing at the intersections when there's changes, are, I guess this is a question, are those being reevaluated? Because like 44th Avenue, sometimes when they change the configuration, the backup makes it so you literally can't even get out of my neighborhood because it goes back so far that getting out, you literally have to go right, go around, and then come through. So is signal timing be, being reevaluated as they're doing these various changings and reconfigurations?
CDOT manages the, the signals along Wadsworth, and while we can request that, the project can request re-timing, they're hesitant to do that for individual, sort of, these smaller traffic impacts. So I think over the last month here, just as an example, we've been doing a lot of work on 44th Avenue, which has restricted both access across and then turning movements. And so it has impacted the signal. So we can certainly ask for that. We're hoping as we move further south in the corridor that the intersection, like with 44th, will free up a little bit, but then it'll just move to 38th. So I think, good, good, that's great feedback. We can see what we can do with CDOT to try and at least tweak that a little bit so that we don't get those long backups on Wads.
Okay, that sounds good. And I guess like the second part of that is, so coming out of my neighborhood, the sign that the intersection was closed was far back, so people coming out of my neighborhood that first couple, like the first day, didn't know. So I don't know if there's any way of doing like additional signage, like closer to the project, but just keep it in mind, like, that those of us who live on the neighborhood, like the streets are really close to it, aren't coming down the corridor, but rather coming out into it. And so like, I actually got caught on my bike, and I had to ride my bike down Wadsworth. So anyway, so just sort of thinking about that, like, closure notification, is there a way of, of letting neighbors know and having some sort of notification a little bit closer to the intersection, as, as well as far enough out so when people can?
Sure. Not just people coming, turning off of Wads, but going out from the neighborhood as well? Great suggestion.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Certainly do that.
Thank you. Councilor Nosler Beck is joining us online, and I believe has a question at this time or a comment?
Can you?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I can't, so I don't know. Anyway, I'm glad you can hear me. Here's my question, and it's, it's a follow-up to Councilor Hulteen's question as well, is that if we're going to have the conversation with CDOT around the, the signal timing, I think it's also important for us to make sure that we are including the conversation about the signal timing on Kipling and also, like, Harlan, just because I've, I've experienced and had quite a few people also reach out to me about just the timing, because there's so many, there's so much more pressure on those other arteries or access points to I-70 because of the closure, that, that there's been some pretty significant, I'm assuming that that's why there's been some significant backups in both of those places. And I, and I think that if we're going to have one conversation with them about the signal timing on Wadsworth, it's probably worth also including, can we look at where, where we are either encouraging people to detour to, or where some of those natural detours are happening as well? Just because there were some pretty significant signal backups on Kipling last week that I experienced or neighbors were telling me about. And then also, the Harlan entrance is closed, so there's just a lot of pressures, pressure points, I think, on our signals and, and timing right now.
Certainly. So just to, to clarify, Councilmember Nosler Beck, that you feel people are choosing Kipling or other corridors just to avoid Wadsworth in the construction. So we should look at traffic volumes on those streets as well, not just the, the neighborhood streets, and see if that's increasing dramatically, and then certainly we can ask CDOT to look at timing to try and relieve that to some extent.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. Thanks. You, you phrased it well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any further questions from council? Okay, hearing none. Oh, Councilor Stites, Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question for the businesses on Wadsworth. Is there anything being done by the city or to help those guys out or bring some attention in?
Yeah, I'll speak to part of it, maybe Maria can also. Well, first of all, we're, you know, it's part of the contract with Concrete Works that business access, it has to be open and provided for all businesses, as far as I know, it has been to this point. But we are, we understand how difficult it is, any construction project's going to have, is going to keep some people away. So we are working with local works to see if we can put together some type of shop Wadsworth campaign to maybe put a spotlight on those businesses to help them out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions before I go to a motion? Okay, hearing none. Councilor Hutchinson, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution Number 44-2023, A Resolution Approving Amendment Number Three to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation for the Improved Wadsworth Project. Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Hoppe. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? Thank you. We will now move to Agenda Item Number Seven. Mayor Protem Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 45-2023, A Resolution Approving a Non-Exclusive Public Right-of-Way License Agreement with Google Fiber Colorado LLC. At issue, Google Fiber approached the city in late 2022 to discuss installation of new 100% fiber optic network internet service for the city's right-of-way, or in the city's right-of-way. The city would grant a non-exclusive license agreement to Google Fiber to use and occupy the public right-of-way to install, operate, and maintain a fiber optic infrastructure network for the purpose of offering communication services, including broadband internet access service and voice-over internet protocol services. City staff has negotiated an agreement that will protect the right-of-way and ensure adequate oversight during the construction process. The term of agreement is for an initial 20 years.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We have, yeah, a little bit. We did have a significant study session presentation on this back in March 20th, but I think Maria has a few more items to add, and we do have our team, big team back there of Google Fiber folks here, so I think they're able to answer any questions too. Okay.
Yes, thank you. So just briefly, again, we've been working probably over the last eight to nine months on this right-of-way agreement. I want to recognize the city attorney for his tremendous help in helping us navigate the ins and outs of the agreement. But we really feel that this is a great option to provide to the city. It's totally voluntary, so it's not a requirement for people to sign up with this, but it does offer an alternate option for people. And so we feel that the agreement itself and the language that we've arrived at covers the, the needs of the city in terms of protecting our right-of-way, as well as reimbursing us for the costs that we'll incur to inspect the project as it goes through construction, and ultimately, working with, with the Google Fiber team to communicate this service out to the public.
Okay, thank you. We will invite the public to speak on this item at this time. I have no one signed up to speak, but once again, if you're here in the hall or joining us online, please raise your hand in the virtual format. We'll, happy to bring you into the meeting. And I'll ask my clerk if there's any, anyone raising their hand in the virtual format. Okay, then we will close our public's speaking opportunity on this item and go to questions from council. Any questions from council before I ask for a motion? Councilor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in, in the proposed agreement, in Section 2.7, under repairs, there's a standard set there that is, it says licensee will repair the damaged property to a condition equal or better than that which existed prior to the damage, within 30 days after such damage occurs. And then there's a little bit about if they don't do it, the city can step in and do it and pursue costs on that. And I just, what, we're talking about like repairs to the street from pulling it up, and, and what it, like, are those standards clearly set? Because as someone who rides their bike, I'm very aware when contractors don't do a good job of getting those, those, you know, whether they're getting in first to align or whatever they're working on. So, so how are, how are those standards articulated and understood by everybody?
Certainly. So 30 days, I would say, is, is relatively common to give the contractor, regardless of the contractor, time to respond. If we notice a problem, what we do is we'll cone it off or do some other measures to protect the public if there's significant opportunity for either trip hazard or damage or driving through there, whatever. So the 30 days, we give them notice once we identify that, and that gives them time to respond and adequately address it. So I would say 30 days is common, but we can take interim measures to protect the public.
Okay, great. As, as the project rolls out, I'm sure at the beginning, there'll be, you know, that's, it'll be established early on, and then hopefully that standard is, is kept. But a lot of times, you know, the standard of repair still is like significant, like dips and like offset lips and stuff like that. And since this is going to be touching every street in our city, I think making sure that that standard of repair, you know, creates good conditions for people using the road is important. Thank you.
And, and I would say, for the most part, especially on our residential streets, they're using this technology called microtrenching, which will leave fairly minimal impact within the street right-of-way. So we're, we will watch as this goes in with other communities and kind of learn from their pros and cons as they go through this and see how we can address that. Also, I would say that the 30 damages is the long-time window, so hopefully they'll respond even sooner than that when we bring these issues to their attention.
I appreciate your attention on that.
Any further questions of council? I had one, Director DeAndrea. On the individual permits required, will we issue a permit for each individual address as they go across that address?
It's more of, most likely, a group or a section of areas or streets. And so they will, Google Fiber will determine that based on their available crews, their resources at the time, and it might be, for example, one permit application might be a 10-block by 10-block area. So then they would install the facilities within that area. We would issue one permit for that area and then go on from there, not by individual property.
Okay, and then, so they would, they would commence and complete all of the operations within that permit area before they went to another permitted area?
I'll, I'll let Louis or George speak to that. I, I believe the intent is to do one area at a time, but there may be some concurrence.
And if you would please give us your name and, and maybe an address.
Sure. My name's George Mantos. I'm the head of Metro Tech Ops for Google Fiber Colorado. Regarding the permits, most often, we construct permits concurrently, in parallel. And that way, we just are progressing the build as efficiently as possible, and lends to a better customer experience. And we certainly submit each permit with the hopes that, or intention that it will be reviewed and approved by Public Works before we proceed.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any further questions? Okay, seeing none. Let's see. Mayor Protem Stites, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 45-2023, A Resolution Approving a Non-Exclusive Public Right-of-Way License Agreement with Google Fiber Colorado LLC. Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Ohm. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? Okay, thank you very much. That completes our agenda items on this. We will go now to the City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a special study session after this, so I'll keep this short. But just a reminder, for council, we'll be celebrating and thanking our boards and commissions and volunteers this Wednesday evening, 5:30 to 7:30 at Anderson Park. So hopefully, we'll see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will go to our City's Attorneys Matters. Our attorney is joining us online, Mr. Dahl.
Hello, and, and thanks for letting me join you virtually so that I can recover a little bit. And I look for, I don't have anything else other than to say, I'll look forward to seeing you in person at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. We will go to Elected Officials Matters. Let's see, I'll start with our clerk.
As of 5 o'clock this afternoon, the deadline passed for filing papers to run for public office in Wheat Ridge on the November 7th ballot. We have two candidates for the seat which Ms. Hutchinson occupies now in District One, Clarence Fuller, oh my goodness, I'm going to forget my friend's name. I'm sorry? Jenny Snow, what I have is Gretchen, which is in the office. So there'll be two candidates vying for that seat. In District Two, Councilmember Hulteen will run unopposed. In District Three, Councilwoman Stites will run unopposed. In District Four, Dan Larson and Larry Matthews will compete for the seat that is vacated by Councilmember Nosler Beck. In District Four, Dan Larson and Larry Matthews will compete for the seat that is vacated by Councilmember Nossobeck. Both City Treasurer Miller and I will run for reelection unopposed. Is there any one question?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got, I'm gonna, I'll try and get through this quickly. Happiness Gardens report, it's good, it's happy. Somebody picked a bunch of sunflowers and put a big bouquet in a vase in the middle of the picnic table at Happiness Gardens, so it's kind of fancy there. So wear your nicer clothes next time you go, because I got classed up. Then, second, I just want to thank city staff. I think the boards and commissions barbecue festivities in Anderson Park is just a really sort of refreshing and fun, like, update to how we've done this. I'm looking forward to that and hopefully meeting some of the families of some of the people who serve in our city. Now, I've got a couple of things that I'd like to bring forward for consideration to add to the future study session list. The first thing is, I've heard from several constituents, some confusion over the noticing for the city's donation of the parcel at 44th and Wadsworth, as well as the rezoning. It's been confusing because it's a parcel that is completely surrounded by another parcel, and the subject parcel will be part of an assemblage. And ultimately, the donation and the zoning of that parcel are really part of a larger property. And so I would like to, I'd like for council to take a look at updating our noticing that in the event a subject parcel is part of a known assemblage, that the noticing boundary is inclusive of the entire assemblage, not just the subject property. Do I have support to bring that forward?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And then the second thing I'd like to bring forward is revisiting some of our animal welfare codes. In particular, there's unsupervised animals. I think we don't adequately address in our current code. Two things come to mind. One is, quick story, once I was at Costco in Arvada, and it was a warmish day, and there was a dog clearly in distress in a car parked next to mine with the windows rolled up. And I called Arvada Police, and they were there. Within five minutes, broke the window and got the dog out. I'm not sure our code actually gives us the authority in the event that there is an animal that is contained within a car. Arvada does. So I'd like us to take a look at our ability to actually provide rescue for animals in distress like that. And then another concern I've seen recently is we get more and more row houses and townhouses. I'm seeing a lot of dogs that are being left out on second, left unattended on second-story balconies. I have had a dog, Gromit, who I'm sure Amanda remembers, who jumped out of the second floor of my house to chase a squirrel. So leaving a dog unattended with a very low threshold barrier. I worry a lot about dogs getting excited and jumping off of balconies. I know it seems unlikely, but something I'd like us to take a look at for if those dogs are left unattended on those balconies as outdoor spaces, they're actually very small and actually not good enclosures for dogs to be left unattended. So I'm sure there might be other things in animal welfare, but those are the two I'd like us specifically to look at. Do I have support to have animal welfare brought forward? Thank you. And then my last one, vacant commercial properties. I know, I have not thoroughly looked at our code. I know we have some regulations in general around all properties, in particular vacant properties. But some of our commercial buildings on the corridors, it really has a tremendous impact. And the thing that comes to mind that I specifically like us to look at, but I'm sure there will be other things, and maybe we have regulations, but putting a pressed board over windows on vacant commercial properties really detracts, I think, from the character and quality of the corridors. And I'd like at least to look at requirements to have those painted. A painted board is much less screaming this is a vacant property than pressed particle board. And also making sure we've got strong enforcement around neglected landscaping on commercial properties, because that can be particularly difficult to enforce. So that's another thing I'd like to bring forward to take a look at. Great, thank you.
Okay. Is that it? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ken. That's good. Councilor Hutchinson.
Reminder, you get two a month, Ms. Holtein.
What?
Here, you get two items a month.
Oh, you do? Just me?
My turn. Okay. I want to thank Local Works for having their TLC drop off this weekend, and I think it was well-received. Very appreciate those things. People can get rid of things that they don't want. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. In the past month, I've twice almost been killed in the city of Wheat Ridge. Once on my bike, riding in my neighborhood. Both of them happened within a half mile of my house. And the one where I was on my bike was on 41st at a stop sign. It's a four-way, a four-way stop at Dover and 41st. And I stopped, the driver did not stop at the stop sign. The second one was at 38th and Allison, where I'm at the stoplight, waiting for the green light several seconds, and somebody's coming through probably 55 miles an hour, blowing through the red light. What I would strongly like to advocate for is a study session looking at roundabouts. And I just want to read two things. Safety is one. The Institute for Highway Safety states that where traffic lights were replaced by roundabouts, all crashes were reduced by 37%, and serious crashes fell by 75%, including a 90% reduction in fatalities. The second thing is that I spend a lot of time, we all do, at these stoplights, and a lot of time. And there's a study that showed, an operational study that showed that before, and before average vehicle delay at an intersection is roughly about 20 seconds. After the roundabout, it was reduced to six seconds. So it's a 65% reduction in delay. What I would like us support for is roundabouts in local, where we have these like four-way stops, and also like at minor arterial. So like, you know, 38th and Allison, I'm just giving you two examples. So I'd like support to have a study session to talk about roundabouts. I think we should really consider roundabouts and move Wheat Ridge forward. I think this would reduce accidents. It would decrease time delays. People are getting really frustrated, they're getting frustrated with the Wadsworth, and the roundabouts would help alleviate that frustration. This is something we have, we have to start having conversation and planning for. City of Loveland has, I think, 59 roundabouts, to give you an idea. France has 30,000. So I'd like, I'd like to see if I could get support for a study session on roundabouts.
Thank you. Looks like we have support there. Okay, Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to voice my support. First of all, we are having some District Three meetings. Do we know where we're having that District Three meeting yet?
The one in September is going to be at Vanola's, September 16th, 9:00 a.m. So we're a week after the mayor, so.
A week after or just right after?
The week after.
The week after the mayor's. Okay, great. So we're having a District Three meeting in a few weeks, in September. And I also wanted to voice support for Councilor Holtein's initiative towards animals, and I do think that there should be, again, sort of a comeback to an inclusive talk about farm animals that we have in Wheat Ridge. And we are very welcoming to farm animals, but there are some things that people should be aware of and regarding animal welfare, as well as, if you're amenable to it, Councilor Holtein, I'd like to think about, I've been getting a lot of flyers on wildfire awareness and prevention, and part of that is being pet-ready to know where different kinds of pets can go in case of emergencies. So just putting that under the welfare idea as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to voice my support for Councilwoman Holtein's noticing, public noticing, especially with assemblers lots. We've worked very hard on getting, you know, making sure that we're, we have good policy and good follow-through on our policy for these projects. And it just happens every now and then that a situation comes up where we realize that that wasn't something we thought about. And so I appreciate you bringing that up, and I support you in that. I also just want to say thank you so much to Rebecca Radenbach. She's just done such amazing work in our community. And I know that even in her first year, she, she lost a few clients. And, you know, that makes it hard and for her to be able to carry on and still give our city three years and then still be able to work on that work and stay in that field and move on to another community. So just thank you so much, Rebecca.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, again, want to voice my support for Councilor Holtein's idea about the noticing. I think that's a fantastic idea and something that's going to really help our citizens get a, get a better idea about what's going on as far as development goes. This past weekend, I had a lot of fun out on 38th Avenue, Local Works, and the Chamber put on the Wine Walk. And it was, 10 years ago when the restriping of 38th happened, and there was a big push against it. I don't think that anybody that was against it could have envisioned what we saw on Saturday night, which was an outpouring of our community out on 38th Avenue. It was, it was actually, it was a pretty cool party to watch. Every restaurant was alive and hopping. My kids had some artwork that they had on display from Sweet Ridge Studios, at Sweet Ridge Studios, and the Wheelie Bean was there. So it was great to see all these businesses get together and the community come together and have a lot of fun and really support that. So I want to thank everybody who was involved in that. That was a really great opportunity to see and exactly what I think we want 38th to turn into, which is a gathering place for our community. So that's, that was pretty phenomenal. Had a lot of fun with that. And along with that, the businesses on 38th Avenue seem like they're doing really well, and we really enjoy seeing that. And as we see 38th Avenue develop and we see the construction on Wadsworth, I want to encourage our community to get out and support the businesses on Wadsworth. There's, there's a lot of really quality, really amazing businesses on Wadsworth, big and small, and they need your help right now. We want to make sure that we're drawing a lot of attention to those businesses and get as many community members as we can. So if you can find it, find it and buy it on Wheat Ridge. If you can find it and buy it on Wheat Ridge, find and buy it on Wadsworth. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Nossobeck.
Thanks, Mayor. I think a lot of the things that I was gonna cover have been covered, and it sounds like we're going to be taking some deeper dives in the study session. I just would encourage people who are avoiding Wadsworth right now, if they're traveling through neighborhoods, to please respect the speed limits and know that there are lots of kids and humans and also animals walking in those neighborhoods. And I encourage everybody to just take a deep breath and calm down. It's stressful for everybody, but please, it's just so important for us to keep each other safe. And then also, with the rains that we've been having pretty much every afternoon, if not all day recently, the water's still really high on Clear Creek, and a lot of people are still using the paths and getting close. And we're used to the water running high around spring runoff time, but it's, it's really still very high right now. So please be safe if you're anywhere near any of our, any of our watersheds in the area. Thanks.
Thank you. I would like to add my thanks to Rebecca Rudaba for the great three years that she's provided, her service to our community. This has been a really successful, our Navigator program's been really successful. She was a great part of that. I want to thank you very much and wish you well as you go forward into the future. Thanks again to the Carnation Festival Organizing Committee, chaired by Joe Demott. They've got a great committee, brought a great, great festival to us this year, and we appreciate all their, all their help and all of their work. School is in session as you drive through our city. Please be careful, drive slowly and carefully. We've got kids out, and we want everyone to be able to come home tonight safely. Is there any more business to come before our council? We will have a, we will adjourn after this to a special study session. And so hearing none, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you. And I think, you want to take a little, a little five-minute break? Okay?
Sure, yeah, but five.
Five minutes. I'd like to call to order the special study session for the City Council, for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for August 23, 2003. We have one update on our, one agenda item is the item number one, 38th Avenue West, Street Improvement Update.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we're excited this evening.
Carry it away.
Giving an update. We're not looking for any direction this evening on this item, but just a good update. Mark Westberg is here and Ashley Holland and Lauren Mikulak and Maria DeAndrea. We're all here to answer any questions, but just excited to let you know where we're at, talk about some of the community feedback we're getting and what the next steps are. Mark?
Okay, Mr. Westberg.
Thanks. So I'm not sure all council folks were here last time. We were here in study session talking about 38th Avenue. So I just wanted to really quickly go through some background stuff, remind everybody what 38th Avenue is. This won't take very long. I talk pretty fast. If I am talking too fast, please tell me and I'll attempt to slow down. So it's 1.75 miles between Kipling and Youngfield. It's classified as a minor arterial. It's mostly two lanes except at the ends where it hits Youngfield and Kipling. There are some turn lanes along the way and it's also RTD Route Number 38, which is the southernmost route that we have running through Wheat Ridge today. So there's a big hole in RTD service between like 20th Avenue and 38th that we're trying to plug that. It's a whole nother situation. There is one school in the corridor that's currently closed. We'll have to see what happens with that particular property. There are also two schools nearby. There's one at the east end and one kind of in the middle just south of the corridor. We have shopping centers at either end and some scattered commercial throughout through the corridor. And then there's also a fair amount of multifamily and senior living both communities, both of those types of communities along the corridor. So it's a really kind of an eclectic corridor with lots of stuff in that 1.75 miles. One thing that's really consistent is we have really, in most places, really inadequate and inconsistent facilities for those that are not in cars. The people that we're now, our new catchphrase is that walk, run, bike and roll. So that covers people in assisted devices like wheelchairs or folks that are even just out pushing their kids in their strollers, which Ashley will be doing soon. There's also inadequate drainage facilities. For some folks that live along the corridor, their front yards get wet every time it rains. Coverts plug up. There's just a lot of problems there. There's just not adequate facilities along 38th Avenue. So I just want to talk about those a little bit. These are a couple of images showing where the shoulders, the area next to the shoulder has gotten so full of water that people actually walk on the grass and create a dirt path. This last image, if you look down here, someone has improvised, at the bottom right of the corner, has improvised a board to get across that particular bit of wetness. So it looks like maybe a two-by-eight. I probably wouldn't trust it, but it's probably kids who've done that so they can get across that without getting their feet wet as they're trying to get back and forth to places. So just a couple of quick examples of the inadequacy of the drainage that we have. Just a quick reminder on what our study goals are. We want to improve facilities for those that walk, run, bike and roll. We want to improve the facilities for RTD to make those more attractive. We have a fair amount of bus stops. Some of those are improved, some of those are not. This is one that has a pad and has one of our ad benches where there's a company that maintains this location for us in exchange for putting ads on that bench. And then this is sort of our ideal, right? It's got one of our bus shelters on it. It's got a trash can. It's got a place for people to sit. There's even a place in the shelter for someone in a wheelchair or if somebody with a stroller to get that wheeled vehicle device out of the elements. So that's sort of our ideal, but you'll notice in that picture, if you can see that on your screens, to the left, there's a sidewalk, to the right, there is not. So we have a lot of sort of random bus stops with no facilities connecting to those, which makes it difficult for folks to get to those. We also want to accommodate existing and future traffic. We don't want to mess things up for the cars. We'd like to slow them down a little bit. And then also manage the drainage and utilities. We already talked about the drainage. Here's our poster child of what not to do with utility pole by planting it in the middle of the sidewalk so that if you're wider than a foot and a half, you're not going to make it pass this without either getting on the private property or getting out in the street. So we've got a lot of things to fix on 38th Avenue. And our big goal when this is all done is that we want to come up with a recommended alternative at the end of this. That is consensus of what all the engineering says and a consensus of what all the public say that they want and what they need and all those things. So that's our goal is to come up with something we can bring back to council for adoption, like we did the plan for what I call 38th East, the part between Harlan and Wadsworth. So that's our goal. That's our end game. And I just want to give a shout out to our consultants. They're doing a great job on this. They are really, really responding really quickly and really well to all the things that Ashley and I are asking them to do. We're both kind of particular people and they've been rolling with the punches to keep things moving forward. And let's talk a little bit about a traffic update. The existing traffic, average daily traffic, we did counts for seven days and the average daily traffic those seven days was almost 7,000 vehicles a day, which is pretty low for a two-lane minor arterial. So the road's got a lot of existing capacity for what needs to happen out there. Sort of future conditions, Dr. Cog has projected that we'd have almost a half a percent on average every year, which comes out to about 10% after 20 years. We generally plan things on a 20-year horizon. So this gets us out to 2045. And that adds about 700 cars. And then we factored in the legacy Lutheran Medical Campus Redevelopment Plan, the traffic that was discussed in that plan. We factored in the traffic that's talked about in the Clear Creek Crossing Development and we factored in the Chick-fil-A going in at the corner of 38th and Youngfield. Those were all three things that were brought up by the public during our first round of outreach. Those were concerns. What about Lutheran? What about the new hospital location? What about Chick-fil-A? Sundays is going to be fine, right? But the rest of the week, they're going to generate some traffic. So the future daily traffic, and again, this is in 2045, we're projecting that we'd have somewhere around 12,500 vehicles on 38th Avenue. Now, two-lane minor arterials like 38th Avenue, if they're done correctly, can easily handle up to 15,000 cars. So we're well within the limits of what they've done. And they've done some isolated intersection analysis and everything's looking really good so far, even with the higher vehicle counts. I thought this was interesting. This was our traffic. Again, those seven days averaged out. Not much happening between midnight and 5:00 AM as you would expect. Things definitely rose up for a morning peak at 7:30 and then they dropped just a little bit, not a lot. Normally you see a much bigger drop. And you also normally see the afternoon peak being pretty close to what the morning peak is. But the afternoon, it pretty much grows all afternoon up until about 4:30 and then it just starts dropping off then towards 11 o'clock at night. So really interesting traffic patterns on 38th. It's used pretty much all day long with really only a range of 450 to 650 cars per hour. That's not much of a variation. So it's used pretty much all day long by the folks that live and play and work in that area. This was our speed profile for 38th Avenue. Again, the numbers on the left are really high, like 15,000, because this was all seven days totaled up together. So we've got some really high numbers because it was seven days times that. So it's like, you know, 50,000 cars in this thing total. So you can see the 0 to 35, that's the part I live in. I always drive the speed limit because I'm not a very good driver and I figure they're for me. There's a fair number of folks, even more folks, that drive within that sort of five miles over that we all think the speed limit allows. And then there's a pretty good chunk of folks that are driving up to 10 miles over. And then way too many folks are driving over 10 miles an hour on 38th Avenue above the speed limit. Our highest speed was clocked, I think, at 1:00 AM in the morning and it was 63 miles an hour. It seems that people learned during COVID that when there's nobody on the road, I can just drive as fast as I want. And some people haven't learned to stop doing that now that there are more cars on the road, which is why I think we have people almost getting hit when they're trying to cross intersections and doing things that are legal because there are a fair number of folks that are just not doing things that are legal. The red line represents the speed limit. So we've got a lot of folks driving over that speed limit. We generally try to design roads for the 85th percentile of folks, which is generally five miles over what the posted speed limit is. We've got, only 80% of the folks are staying within that. So 85th percentile's above that five miles an hour above the speed limit. So that's a little bit concerning, but 38th Avenue is kind of a wide open road right now. And one of the terms that the consultant uses is visual friction. We don't have a lot of visual friction along the side to sort of make people slow down. So that'll be one of the things that we'll be looking at as we move forward with the design and stuff. This is just the quick intersection analysis that was done. You can see that most things are showing up green, except surprisingly, 38th and Kipling is showing up not green. Green is good. Red and yellow is bad. And there is one spot there on Tabor Court on the north side that's got a little bit of a delay for folks, I think, trying to turn left out of there. So that was one of the comments we got during the outreach was trying to get left off the corridor and left onto the corridor. This is just a quick snapshot of what's going on with Clear Creek Crossing, which is the blue box on the left, Chick-fil-A, which is represented by the green box, and then the orange box would be Lutheran, once Lutheran is completely built out and the hospital's been moved out to Clear Creek Crossing. Those are just some percentages. The thought is that 30% of the traffic from Chick-fil-A is going to use 38th Avenue, maybe 11% of the traffic from Clear Creek Crossing, and then maybe 20% of the traffic that is coming from Lutheran will take 38th Avenue to get to Kipling and then the numbers drop off quite a bit there. So there's much less actually using 38th to the west. And these are just the numbers for sort of where those, you know, we jumped from 7,000 cars to 12,500 cars. The column on the right is sort of that daily traffic. So maybe 1,800 folks coming from the Lutheran properties, maybe 3,500 folks, 3,400 folks coming from Clear Creek Development. And a lot of those folks could live along 38th Avenue, right? That's just a projection of what, how many folks are going to use 38th to try to get to Clear Creek Crossing. And then our good friends at Chick-fil-A, 700 cars, because they're right on 38th, right? So they're going to generate a little more traffic getting on 38th. But again, the capacity of 38th, what we're seeing right now is two lanes are great. We may need some turn lanes in locations for people to get left, to queue up for getting left off of there. We had our round one outreach and Ashley did an amazing job. So if you have questions about outreach, we're going to have Ashley come up and talk. She did an amazing job helping us plan that and execute that. We had that on June 6th. I think at least one council person came, maybe more, maybe just one. We had over 60 attendees. We logged 60, but we know some people snuck past us because some people don't like getting logged. And this is just a little picture of, we took several pictures while the folks were there. We had boards set up around the room. We had a table down the middle with the entire one and three-quarter mile corridor laid out on that in a scale that could be seen and people could sort of see their properties. They added lots of comments to those. And we, even on the ground, if you look on the ground, you can see right in the foreground, there's a five and that's what a five-foot sidewalk would look like. You know, you think five feet, that's like this tall. That's huge. But when it's laid out on the ground, five feet's not super wide. The next little box is a six-foot sidewalk and the last box is a 10-foot sidewalk. And Jana, our new planning manager, is standing in the middle of the six-foot sidewalk and she's not a very big person. And you can see she fills a fair amount of that six-foot sidewalk space. I fill a lot of six-foot sidewalk space. So we just did that so people could really get an idea of how wide, what different width sidewalks provide for folks. We also put this on our online platform, What's Up Wheat Ridge. We had 640 visitors to that online platform. 75 people responded to the survey. We think that is a great turnout for using the online platform. Between the online map and the in-person map at the open house, we had more than 60 comments that people wrote on sticky notes or just wrote right on the map. So that's been a really effective way to get outreach from folk. This is just a quick snapshot of one location of the map. And you can see a lot of folks posted a lot of comments at this location. So we got a lot of stuff. We take pictures of all of it because when you roll those up, sometimes the sticky notes take off. But we've got all those pictures of that and our consultant team analyzed all those comments. And where we landed was 120 comments, sort of distinct comments that we got from folks that were analyzed. And sort of starting at the upper right, you can see that ped safety is a big one. 25 people talked about that. 15 people talked about bike safety. 13 more people talked about widen and extend sidewalks. And if you roll around to the left side, there's another five that wanted to add crosswalks, four more wanted walking paths. So like 40% of our comments related to bike and ped and people that walk and roll, right? There were several other comments. Some folks were concerned about buses. We had nine people commented about drainage. So it's definitely an issue. We almost never get comments about drainage when we have these types of forums. So the fact nine people commented on that was a pretty big deal. And Councilmember Ohm, one person talked about roundabouts. So there you go.
He was there.
I don't remember if Scott was there. Maybe he's the guy that talked about roundabouts. Or he's in a plant. I don't know. Maybe there was a ringer in the crowd. So just to sort of see how these comments are distributed, we definitely, this is sort of the western half of the corridor. 14 comments at sort of the Applewood Shopping Center, but when you add up all the smaller numbers to the right, those are like 40 more comments through the corridor. So definitely a concentration of comments at the ends, but we also got a lot of comments at very specific locations throughout the corridor. And again, 15 comments about traffic at 38th and Kipling. But again, like 45 comments within the corridor itself. So we had a lot of, some comments at the ends, but a lot of comments right in the middle of the corridor, talking about the things that were happening there. We offered folks a chance to sort of rank. We came up with, based on the outreach that Ashley had done during the Let's Talk Blitz for this corridor and also all the previous work that's been in previous council packets, we took all that and the consultant team and city staff came up with sort of nine questions, nine goals, nine potential goals for the project. And people ranked them. We gave them five dots and they could put all five on one or they could scatter them out as they wanted to. And so the results of that were that lo and behold, the top two things are enhanced pedestrian safety and get comfortable bike facilities on there. And resolved drainage ranked in at number three online and number four in person. There was a little bit of anomaly. It's interesting that in person, the number one ranked thing that showed up on the comments was underground and the overhead utilities to help clean up the look of the corridor and maybe get a few light poles and utility poles out of the sidewalks, right? So it's interesting. Most of these tracked pretty well. Sort of the underground utilities was a little off and then providing community minis was a little off between the online and the in-person. But most of these tracked pretty well with those top-ranked things again being making this safer for the people that aren't driving, which I think someone mentioned earlier, and I'm going to get wrong who said it. If we make it safer for people who aren't driving, then we actually make it safer for the people that are, right? Because they're not running into people. So our next step, we've completed that outreach back in June. We're working on alternate designs based on the round one outreach. A lot of the stuff that we're working on is driven by that round one outreach, traffic analysis, what we sort of know as engineers and planners. We're working on layouts for the round two outreach. And those, I don't expect you to read these, I just wanted to flash these up, that these are the kind of things that we're going to have ready for the public. We've got four locations throughout the corridor that we think are, it's kind of a psychotic corridor, right? With all the different things along it, but we've picked four locations that are representative of what's along the corridor and then trying to fit in what we could. So we've got three different alternatives that we're looking at. So the top cross-section is the existing and then we've got three different alternatives that are being looked at that came as a result of the public outreach and also just the things that you do to try to accommodate those bikes and pads. We're going to start What's Up Wheat Ridge, we're going to start the round two outreach pretty soon here in another month or so. What's Up will be pretty much active through the entire month of October. We're going to have block-by-block meetings on October 5th. We did those on 38th East and also on Wadsworth. We met with just the folks that are immediately adjacent to the corridor that either live there or own there so that we can talk, we can pull out a plan and say, here's what's happening at your property with these three alternatives. We just want to be completely forthcoming and forthright in what we're doing and show you exactly what we think might happen here based on these three alternatives at this very conceptual level of design. We're going to have a pop-up event at Lewis Meadows Park on October 12th. We're trying to beat daylight savings time ending because then it won't be dark at 5:30. And then we'll have our second open house on October 25th. It'll be very similar to the first open house. The one difference is we're going to be asking folks to make decisions there so we're going to try to do a lot more informational stuff. The first meeting was more about learning from the public, what's going on there. And now we're going to give them a lot of information, ask them to help us make some decisions. us make some decisions. We're going to use the public input at the second open house to help select that preferred alternative. Right now with the three alternatives we're using, from an engineering standpoint, they all work to provide facilities for bikes and peds. So the deciding factor, we're going to, we're going to work on pros and cons here pretty soon. Things like different, differences in cost and, and impacts and, and those kind of things, those might help differentiate them a little bit, but I think really the public input we're going to get is going to be the big differentiator on which alternative we move forward with. And then we'll try to come see you. It takes us a while to, to read through all the comments and get those compiled, so we'll try to come see you in December, um, with an update on what happened with round two and what we're getting ready to do in, in the next round. So, um, after we do all that, we're going to, we're going to refine, we're going to get a preferred alternative pick, and we're going to find that based again on the traffic analysis, maybe some left turn lanes at, at certain intersections. And then the drainage analysis, once you put curb and gutter in, you gotta deal with the drainage and the drainage needs to be dealt with anyway out there. We're going to produce conceptual plans that'll show right-of-way impacts. So far, and this is one of those cross-your-fingers things, it looks like everything we're planning on doing right now today so far is that we're going to be within existing right-of-way. And maybe even with the, sort of the existing footprint, some of those areas, it's just two lanes of traffic, so we definitely have to go outside those. But, but sort of what people think of as the road width really is not going to change that much, again, depending on where we need to insert some left turn lanes and, and things like that. So we're going to get a conceptual cost estimate. That'll help refine the number that's sort of been presented to council, um, with, with the ballot, um, information. And then we're also going to get a suggested construction phasing out of this, because whenever you, you mess with a two-lane road, there's not a lot, you can't, do you like on Wadsworth where we're switching traffic over and doing things, right? It's going to be a little difficult to phase the construction on this. And then we'll do round three outreach sometime in the spring, hopefully the early spring of 2024. And then I'm just ready, and Ashley's ready for questions and comments, just a quick reminder of, this is what we're trying to fix. This is what most of Thirty-Eighth looks like out there, um, and it's just not great for people that aren't driving a car.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Westburg. Questions? Counselor Weaver.
Thank you. Thank you, City. Thank you, Mark. Thank you. This is awesome. I'm so excited about this.
I am too, a little bit, if you can tell.
And I, I just love the input that you got from everybody. It, it feels like you have, it's just been a really participat, I mean, starting with the Let's Talk stuff, I just really, really appreciate. It's going to be so cool. So thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, and thank you, also thank you, everyone on City. As somebody who has done some work on this corridor over the years and studied it in preparation, I think helping leading up to this, it's really exciting to see these very tangible, specific things finally coming forward. And I, I, so I've got a couple of questions. First of all, I just love calling it a psychotic quarter because it's just, it's really erratic in terms of how it's built. Many of you know my famous picture of my yellow crook-neck squash that was the entire width of the bike line at one point, so I'm glad to see we're going to be improving that. So I have a couple of actually pretty specific things. I'm curious why Lewis Meadows for the pop-up and not Louise Turner Park?
Oh, it's Louise Turner. Sorry, I wrote the wrong one down.
Okay. I was going to say, that's weird.
Yes. Yeah, it is, it is weird. I apologize for that. It is, sorry.
Okay. All right. Good. All right. Good.
Nobody on the consultant team caught it, even though we stopped at Louise Turner Park while we're doing, I just got Lewis Meadows in mind because it's Helena Gold, so it's a floodplain, so it's in my brain. So I apologize for that.
Okay.
Yes, Louise Turner Park on Thirty-Eighth.
Perfect. I'm really glad to hear that because when we were doing the Activate Thirty-Eighth work, the outreach on the corridor, um, that corridor has such a diversity of demographics and housing styles, and the one thing we learned that time to reach people who are living in some of the apartment buildings and the higher-density housing right along that kind of hubbed near Louise Turner was to show up in their parking lot or in the park and just, you gotta literally catch them and meet them where they, they are, because they are, you know, they don't have time or awareness or engagement sort of bandwidth to like come somewhere off the corridor, so I'm really glad to hear that that is happening there. Another thing that I'm sort of curious about, so I looked at the data from 2017 and the traffic counts were hovering closer to 9,000 vehicle count on the quarter. Have you, have you compared like what the trends have been based on the city's own data over time?
The, the consultants have, and, and I'm not sure where that 7,000 came from. That might've been right in the middle of the quarter where things do tend to drop off a little bit compared to the ends. So, because we're trying to, you know, take a peek at things right in the middle, but I, I can look into that and we can, we can report back to you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just sort of curious because the data we have was at different spots, and so that was the average across the, the quarter.
We've had a lot of changes on the quarter, like, you know, the Walmart closed for a while, there was nothing in there at all, and then the new stuff has opened up. Um, you know, the Safeway at the East End closed a long time ago, and then, and then the Sprouts came in, so there's been a, it's, it's going to be a little dicey comparing things without knowing the context of when those counts were taken and what might've been there. I know I took Thirty-Eighth all the time going to Walmart when I was living in Wheat Ridge, so.
Awesome. And then my last thing is, uh, so as far as the speed limit, I, I'm very, I'm acutely aware that people will travel, uh, the speed that they feel they can travel and that the speed limit itself doesn't really have as much mandate over the, the speed. But, you know, 32nd Avenue, which is a much wider corridor, there are places where it's 30 miles per hour. And I know you know this, Mark, but the MUTCD update's coming out and it's really moving away from the 85th percentile guidance. And so I really hope that we're looking at the corridor design to make sure that traffic can, can move well, but really at a safe speed.
Yeah.
And, um, so I'd love for us, when we're talking about this quarter, to, um, you know, be thinking outside the box on 85th percentile, uh, speed limits, and the data that you showed really indicated that we're 10 miles an hour, you know, on, on that 85th percentile over where it should be, so.
Yeah, this, the, the skew towards the high side isn't much different from what we saw on Thirty-Eighth East before we did the Restriping Project. You know, just that Restriping Project slowed people down, especially those first few years after we did it, they really, really slowed down. I haven't, I haven't looked at data post-COVID. It seems like everything's kind of gone out the window post-COVID with the way people drive. But, um, we'll certainly look at that, and I, I don't think there's anything that, that marries us to that 35 mile an hour speed limit, so we'll, we'll look at that also.
Awesome. And then I'll just put a plug in for, uh, I have called it Thirty-Eighth Avenue Walk for west of Kipling. So if we need to start branding it Thirty-Eighth Avenue Walk, west of Kipling, and walking when it's safe.
Yes.
At some point.
We, the, the stakeholder, we had about 20 people and it was, and we are all wearing vests and stuff, right? So we were, we had a lot of visual friction to that corridor. We added a lot. And it was interesting, we'd see people come, and at least in my eye, they were traveling fairly quickly, and then all of us were piled up right in the shoulder. They slowed way down as they went past us, like, who are these people doing? So it, the visual friction thing is a real thing, and if we can add some of that, um, I think will help things out.
Great. Well, I appreciate all your work and I'm very excited that this is moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, thank you, Mark and staff. Looking through the report, it's very comprehensive. There's a lot of data, a lot of good questions. Happy to see that you did have a high participation rate with everybody and giving that feedback. I think that's great. The one, the one question comment I had was on the, um, as we'll probably be putting in RTD bus stop shelters, is that some of the shelters I've seen that exist on Thirty-Eighth, they appear to be almost like a dugout where they're, they're almost encapsulated, so much so, um, that if you were someone that was sitting there and three other people got in, you're pretty trapped. The picture that you showed looked like it's fairly open, um, and safe, and I've heard sometimes that safety is an issue at some of these bus stops. And so I don't know if you've had, if you've had conversations with RTD a little bit on like, kind of what you're proposing, which I think is great versus kind of some of the existing that we, we do have? Is that something that you've had any conversations with?
Yeah, RTD was actually on the stakeholder walk with us, so they had three people there, so it was really great to get their input. The one guy doesn't own a car and all he does is ride the bus. So he was, he was really valuable with, with talking about all the different things that, that go on. We've not have, had specific safety things with that. Um, and I, I'm not sure that we'll get shelters at every stop, certainly the higher ridership stops we're going to aim to get shelters at. But, you know, we, we definitely want to give, give it so that people can walk and roll to that bus stop much better than they do today. And then try to do some things just to make those, that stop as comfortable as, as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stites.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mark, and, and staff for, for all your work on this. I actually saw you guys doing your, your tour with your yellow vests on that day. I almost pulled over and jumped in with you just to kind of see, see what was going on. But, uh, um, I think this is really exciting and, uh, to look at the feedback that you guys are getting from these surveys, that, that tracks with what I would have envisioned you guys getting from this, because those are kind of the same comments that Counselor Weaver and I get in our district meetings, those are the same comments I got when I was knocking on all the doors around there. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's the ped stuff, but it's the drainage stuff, especially up on Tabor. That's a, that's a, that's an ugly-looking little area right there, Thirty-Eighth and Tabor.
That's where those two pictures were from.
Yeah, yeah. I, I jump over that puddle every day when I go for a walk and, you know, as somebody who, you know, I live in the same house I grew up in, I used to ride my bike from that all, or from my house at, at Thirty-Eighth and Ward to, uh, the tire shop at Thirty-Eighth and Quay. And, uh, there's no way in heck I would let my kids anywhere near that on their bike now, um, because of the traffic and because of the speeds. So, um, I think that you guys are, you guys are right on track with, with everything that I'm seeing. And, um, I was going to ask, uh, why Lewis Meadows, I figured maybe because it was a little quieter than, uh, Louise Turner, so glad you guys have it there. And, um, thank you for all the hard work and, and District Three appreciates it. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? I had one, um, Lutheran Legacy Campus, do you, are you able to factor in what sort of